For Terry, Alex, would you like to call the dance?
Yeah, I'll get it started for us, Eric, thank you. So at our last regular meeting, we did decide to block off some time before today's regular scheduled meeting to continue some of the discussions we had on the, what's now become a shared effort between the commission and staff, but originally initiated by staff for some revisions to our current standards. Obviously, it's been a few months since we've been able to focus on this topic. So helpful reminder, the objective for this was to, as I'm sure we all have some thoughts and ideas on how the standards can be better written or administered to carry out the charge of the HPC and protecting the special character of the historic district, but it was to look through some of the processes in which could be altered for major work versus minor work, and how more clear, objective standards for projects that may not have a substantial change that could authorize staff to carry out an issuance of a COA, or decide that it cannot be and must be reviewed by the commission as a whole for a major COA. So a lot of the topics that we have discussed and come to at least some sort of a head nod consensus have been changes to some of the fence regulations to make some clarification points, honestly, as far as that location of the fencing and as far as side yard versus rear yard. Other changes that we have discussed that we most recently picked up at the December meeting was changes that relates to existing residents' windows and doors, exterior materials, and that's sort of the topic of today's specific discussion to initiate with the HPC. I have provided a redline, underlined, strike-through format as we've been going through with some comments that I have highlighted as something that we might need to have some greater discussion points on to see if we as a whole want to go a certain route or another. It's also important to mention that a lot of the material we discussed in the past couple of meetings, too, were some of the information in the preamble as far as how an application is, well, A, how a request for an application is first initiated, and then the process getting it to review for a major COA before the commission. So we're going to pick back up, and this is under how to obtain a certificate of appropriateness. I believe it is page eight or nine, should be eight or nine in our current standards. But under subsection C, so this is the second page listing of minor work items. So some minor formatting changes there with including a new bullet, the second bullet there, which is something we can discuss, staff has proposed, is that minor work could be resurfacing buildings with an allowed substitute material. Therefore, if there's a change in the material, that it could be a staff-level approval so long as it is, A, whatever we deem to be an allowable substitute material, and that that substitute material does match the original in style, dimension, depth, and profile. And that terminology has been in some shape or form in the historic standards since it was first created in 2006. So example of how this may be applied, because that's the most important aspect, I think, to follow through for this, is if you have existing vinyl horizontal siding, which is not an allowed material in the district as it currently sits, and you want to change that vinyl material to something that is more palatable, I will say, not necessarily quote-unquote "approved" or "allowed," because we don't have a specific list, we have a prohibited list. So let's say like a fiber cement product, which has been very common for the past four to six years. But the width, the depth, the dimension, the profile would all remain the same. The reveal, all that would remain the same, then it's something staff could approve. What would not be even, would not, what would not fall under this category, an example of that would be if you have an existing brick veneer or brick structure, and you're wanting to change it to a allowed material such as a fiber cement siding that is lap, or if you have an existing lap siding home and you want to change it to all shingle or brick exactly. So even though if it's an allowed material, it's still got to match somehow within style, dimension, depth, and profile the existing.
This would presumably also cover a situation where you were placing one allowed material with another allowed, so wood siding with hardy plank or something.
Correct.
As long as it was the same style and what have you.
Sure. And there's also, others here may have some specific examples, but you may have an existing wood siding structure, and there's also wood composite out there that might not be, you know, southern yellow pine, but it is some sort of wood composite that would also, basically if it were on the house and you knocked on it and you felt it, and you saw that, again, the profile and the dimensions were the same, you would hardly recognize the difference.
So it would escalate to a major work if, for example, and we face this, it was Dutch lap, and they come in and they want hardy, just clapard, right?
So if that profile, if you're looking at that profile and it's changing, yes.
Okay.
Since we don't have a list of approved materials, if I were facing this for the first time as a new homeowner reading the rules, and I got to this item that says allowed substitute materials, first thing I'd do is go look for a list.
What is it?
Allowed substitute.
Approved materials.
Allowed substitute materials. So is there a way we could, in effect, reword it so it essentially says, provided it's not a prohibited material?
That's one way.
We have a list of those.
That's certainly one way to take care of it, so that doesn't put a burden on us, at least at this charge or at this stage, to create an approve list. So there's the two options, I think. We kind of need to say what could be allowed, wasn't allowed substitute material, or conversely, we say that is not a prohibited material, because we have that parachute that it's got to match the dimension, depth, profile, et cetera.
And I think if you get into the allowed, the question is, you got five types of hardy board anymore. Which one of them is allowed and which one of them isn't allowed? If you get into an allotment list, you almost end up having to do, it's hard to come up with allowed, so I think your idea of coming in and saying, unless it is a prohibited material, makes more sense.
I think that's fine, except to the extent someone invents a new type of something, and it comes from, then we would have to decide whether to approve that, and separately whether to add it as an, well, add it if we didn't approve it, add it as a prohibited. And that will, without a doubt, happen at some point, when we don't know.
Sure.
You know, when we were having our discussions with the National Park Service's consultants, we learned that, at least unless they've changed their minds, they prohibit cementitious siding, hardy board or whatever we want to call it, and they were somewhat dismayed to hear that we didn't. I was somewhat dismayed that they did, because I may have been born in the 20th century, but I'm living in the 21st century, and, you know, I think it's a good thing. I think that argues for the prohibited. Something new is going to come along, and if we haven't prohibited it, then, you know, that may cause us to consider whether we should.
So we can...
Okay, thanks.
So certainly in order to get maybe a small victory at this point, because we all know that, and the charge was with, when the form of the historic, the adopted standards we're working off of now, which was approved in May of 2019, council at that time said, let's not go another six or 10 years again and update this document. There have been some very minor, almost statutory changes, terminology changes, very minor changes, that have occurred twice. So I think it's very important for this commission and staff to really review this document annually. So I think that is something for, again, small victory now, not a prohibited material, and always be working to evolve a list or think of a list. We have a member with us that's going to be with us another couple of years, not pointing and signaling anyone out, that might could help us with some of that, Richard, we might could lean on you for a little bit if you're aware of some, you know, materials, so we can...
[laughing]
What I'm saying is, we can get some work out of you guys, too.
Alex, do you want to entertain substitute language here, or do you want to take that for, staff will go back and take that and re-present?
So ideally, what we'd like to do, maybe work through the material time permitting today, before our regular meeting, on the very, you know, minor material that we've got to review today, and then we're going to bring a comprehensive list for a formal vote with the commission on. So right now, I can sketch something out, we can say resurfacing buildings with a substitute material that is not prohibited. I'm open to suggestions here from anyone, if that works, then fine, I mean...
So what I'm saying is, do you want us to give you our thoughts, or do you want to take, we all understand what you're going to do.
Sure.
I would replace an allowed with a non-prohibited.
All right.
We don't have to debate specific language here if you want to take that.
I mean, I can look for a head nod, I'll take a direction for you guys, all right?
Is there anyone who does not like the idea of saying a non-prohibited material? Okay, well, I think that's...
I like the idea.
I think...
One step further.
I think we have as close to consensus as we're going to get.
So Alex, you're going to just wordsmith it and get back to us?
Yeah. Thank you again, John. All right, next bullet involves around roofing material. Just looking at it, there's, I think there's a couple of ways we can approach this, but there's been instances where, because the way that reads, if you're just changing the color of, if you've got a, let's say, a dark charcoal or an almost black asphalt shingle roof, and you're going to a gray asphalt shingle roof, now again, that might be a very extreme example of where you're technically changing the color, and that requires a major COA, even though your material's not changing. Or if you're going from, I'll say, I would just use charcoal again, it seems to be quite popular, or a dark gray, to a tan-colored, for example, something that resembles like a real Cedar Shake-type style. Different material, you know, we, that might could, I can see that being argued, that a change in a roofing material could be a major change to that, so if we want to just allow that it's an allowed...
We have one of those coming up this afternoon.
Correct. We've had, we've had a dozen probably since 2019.
The one today's not only material that this would allow, but the color is not one of the approved colors.
Recommended, yes.
We don't have a list at all of approved roofing materials, or we don't have any prohibited roofing materials. Why are we even mentioning approved materials? It's not in the guidelines to begin with. We care about the color.
Style and the color we care about.
Yeah, which you could argue that if it's a, if it's the same style, then you can say, we could...
Material.
Same style, color.
Provided it's the same material, then I can see that would be minor. Anything but the same material would be major.
I thought we had discussed also a replacement where it was the same darn thing would not even be minor work, it would be...
Basic work.
No, it would be lowered to, I thought you were going to have whatever the lower level is, that they let you know, a notice kind of thing. No?
I'm open.
No, we discussed that.
I think we did.
If it's same for same, I mean, style, materials, everything is identical, I don't know why that wouldn't be basic.
Well, yeah, they basically tag it as repair.
Went through that.
I can see, somebody wants to replace a cheaper asphalt shingle, let's say gray asphalt shingle roof, and they want to replace it with a more expensive so-called architectural asphalt shingle roof in tan. So that's same material, different profile, different color, that could be minor.
But if you went the very same, then it would be...
What's to review?
The lowest level is a notice, and I didn't know if you were...
What's to review, other than go look at it and say, yeah, it's a new roof?
I didn't know if you were going to incorporate the primary level going in, the lesser of all these levels would be just a notice to you at the staff?
Yeah, I mean, they would need to provide something to me and let me go, let staff go take a look, and just, because you got to make that determination that it's the same, right?
Right.
But shingles haven't expected useful life.
Right.
And so if you're coming up on that, it is a maintenance item for you to replace the shingles on your roof with something.
Or forbid, there's a hailstorm. I think we went through that not too long ago, right? And largely...
Hurricane or a hundred other reasons that they can get damaged, a tree falls on it.
But even if none of that happens, eventually, the shingles have to be replaced.
Particularly asphalt.
Well, then, I mean, we've got kind of some wordsmithing issues, but more fundamentally, we've got the question of whether this should be a minor work item, or whether this should be something that can be done without even involving Alex's approval.
Well, I think...
If it's strictly a maintenance item.
And that would go back into basic, if it's an identical replacement with an identical color, materials, et cetera, that ought to be basic. If you're going to do one more step, like change the color, change the structure of the material or something to that effect, then somebody ought to look at it.
Well, yeah.
Provided it's the same material, I would say it's minor.
And if we're changing material, then maybe it ought to come, as is the case we will hear today and others that we have heard.
Yeah. If you're going to change the material, we could take that out of there, but the rest of it is...
Well, the added language keeps it in the minor work level, right? Anything before that is...
Oh, yeah, everything.
What I'm saying?
Yeah.
What he added makes it a minor work, everything else, I think, should be at that, I just, I thought we had discussed that.
We did, I think that's, we're talking, we're talking the minor work stuff right now, we've already agreed, I think, that everything is, if it's a one-for-one, identical replacement, it's basic, and we aren't, that's where that goes. But the rest of it, if you're going to change, and if I understood David's point, if you're going to change materials, then it ought to be minor work. If you're going to...
It ought to be major work.
It ought to be major work, okay. If you're changing style, that ought to be major, I would say, okay? If you're changing size, it's major, and if you're changing color, that's the one, probably major, too.
Well, for me, color, if it's the same material, is less important than color if it's not the same material.
I agree. Basically, we're taking what's minor work here and making it basic, and just adding some language to couch this and qualify this. And then we're saying, if you're going to, if the look, if the feel, if it's going to be different, it's major. You're changing look at the house, that's major, that's going to come before us. If it's the same material, if it's like-for-like, if it's substantially similar in every which way, Alex and team can handle that, that doesn't need to come for us.
So paraphrasing, we'll have to go back and, again, because you need to see how it falls in line with basic work, minor work, and major work now. So basic work is going to be basically a like-for-like, an in-kind replacement. Minor work's going to be, you're not changing the material or the style per se, if you've got a shingle, you're going shingle, right? Architectural or asphalt, and it's an okay color. Major is, you're changing the material, no matter what color it is, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or you're changing the style, no matter what.
Correct, those two things, yeah.
And I think it's what, it's important to remember that when we're talking about whether something is basic work or minor work, the initial decision about that is going to be made by the homeowner or the builder. Alex and his office don't get involved in that, whereas if you're talking about whether something is minor work or major work, Alex gets involved in it, and if it looks, in his judgment, that it's more of a change than should be considered minor, he says it's major work and you have to come to the HPC.
But I thought there was going to be language in the instructions or a flow chart or whatever, that the first thing you should do, even if it's basic work, is you talk to these guys, and then they can tell you what it is, right?
But that's a recommendation rather than a procedural requirement.
And I do believe we made those changes at a previous, again, it's been a handful of months since we've done this, but yeah, it was like, you, you know, no matter what you're considering, go here first.
Like an intro packet.
Start here. The village planner makes...
Ain't that cost you anything, it won't cost you anything, you just got to go to planning and say, here's what I want to do, how do I do it?
Correct.
Which is a good question to always ask them.
Barring looking it up real quick, I'm pretty sure that that language, that, you know, the village planner makes the determination of whether a proposed project is basic work, minor work, or major work. So it authorizes us.
I know that, because I edited the section and sent it to you. And it was in there, but we haven't discussed it since.
Yeah, well, we didn't include basic stuff.
That was likely back in...
I remember it, Dan.
Eons ago.
Yeah, that was probably November.
Yeah.
Okay. Next one is subject matters of windows and doors. So some language to consider or to have a jumping off point for discussion is, if you're replacing or you're installing new windows and doors that are the same style, material, size, and color as existing, or an allowed substitute material that is compatible in style, proportion, shape, positioning, pattern, size, and color.
I think you could find another dimension for which to decide for that.
This is like the first one, we don't have a list of approved window materials, we have a prohibited list, which is a should.
But that's where it's important to kind of scroll down, and we'll get to that, and we probably could have done that for the roof section there, as well as the existing material, or existing materials, so...
Oh, oh.
I know, I was seeing if I had a balloon there, but I don't.
All right, I thought we...
Good more.
Good more.
That's under exterior walls and trim. All right, so do we create a list? Do we create a list prohibited? What cannot be replaced?
What are we prohibiting now? Nothing.
And we don't have a list to verify anything against either, we don't prohibit anything or we don't approve anything.
Right.
So I'd take that out entirely.
But we, window material is your choice.
Is that what we want to consider, though? See, this is just to invoke the discussion here.
I thought there was some language in here, without claiming to have memorized this, because we used to have conversations, I believe it was about vinyl windows, and we wouldn't approve vinyl windows, and finally enough people came before us and said, look, every manufacturer's making them, they're much higher quality than they used to be, and they're more energy efficient and whatever.
They look, from any reasonable distance, they look more like wood anyway, because they make them wood grain when they make them that way.
My recollection on that was, there was a, maybe a misreading or misinterpretation of staff, and then inherently down or up to the HPC, under the prohibited materials list, it was really referencing vinyl siding, aluminum or vinyl, and it was siding. And so the read at that time from previous staff was that, basically, those two materials are absolute no, no matter where. So we did, that was one of those point of clarifications that were made with one of the changes.
Whether we have anything that's prohibited or not at the moment, I think philosophically we ought to stay consistent with the change that we suggested above, and think in terms of a prohibited list. If we don't happen to have a prohibited list, then in theory, anything goes, other than it has to be stylistically, has to be congruous.
And it would also...
Always has to be congruous.
And it always has to meet the applicable standard for staff to be able to approve, so then that's where we go, windows and doors.
I think we have a couple, though, glass...
We get to, we get to say, no, it's better than...
You do, I'm talking about for minor works.
Oh, right.
So anything that's going, that would fall in that category we're discussing would have to also meet that standard, which means...
Glass block windows are not permitted.
Correct, we're not approving those.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, these are prohibited, right? So we do have some prohibited. Painted tinted or filled glass on windows or doors.
So you can't tint them, you can't put a glass block, I could, you could also read...
Security bars.
You could also read that if you've got wooden windows on a street-facing elevation, they should be replaced in kind. So if you're replacing wooden windows on a street-facing elevation with vinyl or whatever, that doesn't technically meet that standard, so does that mean staff's approving that or is that now major work?
But we do have storm windows.
Major work. That's what I'm getting to, so now you're seeing how it's applied.
Storm windows are delineated.
I would like to make one other suggestion. In between the word "the" and "structure" at the end...
Door on a street-facing elevation, too. Sorry, David.
At the very last sentence of that bullet, where it says, color with the structure, where you're trying to compare compatibility with the existing structure, I think it's at least as important that you include existing windows.
Actually...
Somebody's going to add a window or replace...
David, if I could extend that thought, the beginning of this, you're comparing the new with the previous door or window or what have you. Then at the end, we're no longer doing that, we're comparing the new with the structure.
Right.
And I think that's, that gives rise to some potential inconsistency.
It's a simple fix.
I agree, David, I'm not sure "structure" should be here at all.
With the existing doors and windows.
And it's sort of our determination for major work, if it is congruous with the existing structure.
Yeah, don't you find, Alex, there's a lot of discretion for staff, the way it's written? I mean, you're making a compatibility finding, sort of...
Yeah, well, in order to determine compatibility, it's pretty clear there, it has to be an okay material. Now, I'm not advocating for this exact language, I think we've already made it better, but again, that is basically going to be, no dimensions are changing, the grid patterns are not changing. Only thing that could be permitted, could be, as long as it met the other standards, would be if there was a change in material.
And all of those other categories, style, proportion, shape, positioning, pattern, size, and color, any changes to any of those takes it out of minor.
Correct. If you're going from six over six to two over two, that would...
Instead of saying "compatible with," then it says, not the same as the existing doors and windows.
Or that match.
That match or something.
Anything.
The last part goes to, up to major work.
Yep.
Change it from a three over three to a two over two, then I think that's changing what the house looks like. And that's where we get back into the thing again. If it looks just like the same thing, you're just changing material from wood to vinyl, and the vinyl looks like wood...
I don't have a problem with giving that discretion to staff, because I think it is defined tightly enough that it is unlikely to result in an unusual outcome.
Right, but it has to, if it looks different, then comes back to us.
And one of the things we'll see today, people have gone to great lengths to tell us it's going to look the same, like pages of descriptions of windows.
Which is material that we would request in order to make that determination, instead of an email or a statement in an application, right? Show us the product specs, basically.
And just a caution, let's not talk too much about those, because we're not in that business now.
All right, David, John, help me out, what are we, what kind of language are we looking at now, then? So replacement or new installation of windows and doors that match the original in style?
As the existing doors and windows, period.
Or an allowed substitute material, which does not qualify that they may still be of the same size, style, material. I would end it there.
Or a material that's not disallowed.
Yes. Again, we make it shorter, but we also make it clearer.
And a non-prohibited substitute material, how about?
Yes.
Period.
Out of that?
Well, that's okay, it's quite all right, I wasn't offended.
I just rely on John for the wordsmithing, honestly.
He's not bashful.
No, I'm not.
I know, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's a very good thing.
I don't know.
Buddy buddy else, but I appreciate that.
Could I try to short-circuit some of this, so under major work, we'd have to change those sections to be, to work with the new changes we made in minor? Have to go through those?
I think I can probably see what I can work on. You'll see all of this again, you'll see it all again.
In all these, we're moving away from anything that suggests approved to something which suggested not prohibited?
In a way, yeah, that's, I mean, we're being pretty consistent.
On the next one, under minor, I remember the conversation about the dimensions not greater than 12 feet, but...
We didn't know why.
I've never understood that.
12 by 12?
All of these are... I, all of these are qualified by the fact that they would not be in violation of something else. So for example, I couldn't.
It's a trigger for a building permit being required. That's all that is.
If we had a 10 by 10 structure, but I wanted to build it 40 feet high, that would be in violation of other things.
Correct. Okay. And two, what's not included in that document that, that you guys may not be aware of fully is that there's also a governor in the PDO to keep, basically a limitation on area of subsequent or accessory structures that will always keep them. And it's a cumulative total if you have more than one accessory structure, that it's limited to 30% of your main home. So there's always going to be a scale, Governor. So if we say, and then it's further down in the applicable standards, too, that, all right, staff can approve an accessory structure that has basically same style, same material, same colors as a principal building or structure, whichever terminology you like better there. And it's got to be solely located in the rear yard. And then, so if you look at our accessory building standards, it's got to be lower, similar or same pitch. There's other, other language in there, too.
Impervious surface is another check, check is balance.
And I think in the next one, the 144 square feet was an intent to get away from any specific dimension.
I think it was just trying to be consistent with that 12 feet for accessory.
Right. But there was something else that was 100 or 110.
120, I think. There was another.
120.
Yeah.
One.
Which was based on, who knows what.
Nobody knows.
Times table.
It was, it was a number. And I would, I mean, I would welcome any, any dimension there. I mean, there might be a very small building. Again, staff always has that opportunity to elevate, right? But that might be a different determination that I would, I would make from another staff member. We, we do communicate quite effectively in our department. I'm very, I am very proud of it. This group, I feel like we all communicate very effectively as well. So I would entertain if there's another limitation or another square footage requirement. I, I don't want to necessarily be charged with approving demolitions for any structure. But one thing that has come up a couple of times, at least in my experience here, is the added language at the end of that. If, if, if our, if our code official says this thing is unsafe, it has got to come down. They're ordering it down. Then there could be an issue with, then we're having to, we're having to schedule a special meeting, maybe. Get you guys in a quorum. We've got to get an application in. We've got to do a meeting notice to try to get it quickly, or you got to wait for that next. You know, at a minimum, it's going to be 11 days because we've got that notice requirement of 10 to 25.
And what happens if the HPC in its wisdom says, no, we think this is really a historic shed?
They're going to, they're going to demolish it anyway.
You can take it down.
Yep. So, well.
I think safety probably overrules.
It does. So there's statutory language and this has been litigated. Imagine that.
I couldn't believe that.
Where it basically says that, it depends on which comes first, right? Does the HPC jump ahead of getting something in writing from the code official? If you have your hearing before the code official makes that, that finding in writing, then you can still delay the demolition and try to salvage it. You still can. If you beat, if you have that hearing, you beat the, beat the code official to the clock. But if the code official has already provided in writing that this thing has got to come down, and then the hearing comes, you're, it's, you're going through the motions.
If the code official walks in and says that this thing is going to fall down on somebody's head, and we need, and you guys have already said you've delayed it for six months, I think that'd be a little tough to defend.
It's only if it's going to fall, I think, within a right of way or some, there's, there's other special criteria. So there is still options, believe it or not, for that.
But Alex, what you just described is, if the code official rules first or if we rule first, that's clear cut, black letter law in statutes and ordinances of the Village of minors.
And the state of North Carolina.
And the state of North Carolina. Okay.
So if my colleague walks down and says, and trust me, it's going to be conversations we have, we have had prior. It's probably going to be because, you know, last month we heard a case for a house where a dilapidated structure had previously been not ordered down, but it was in disrepair. There's, there was one, two, two and a half years ago, it was a, it was like a storage shed or something. You guys remember, we forwarded you a memo and.
Yeah, it was behind, it was down there.
It was, it was demoed by neglect, basically. It was already on the ground, really, you know. So anyway.
But I think we're getting out of the scope of what we talked about here in this thing. Stay focused on what we got.
That's all, if that's black letter law, then we don't have to worry about it.
That's right.
Adam, to change from 144 to 120, Adam, I may as well just leave it as is. Unless there's a reason to go down, I think that common.
My recollection, Richard, was there was a conflict. In some places it was 124 and in other places it said 12 by 12 or something. I'd rather go with the 144, but I don't, I'm not religious about it.
Makes more sense to me.
So you're okay, everyone okay with that proposed language, keeping 144 and the or if da, 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 da?
And if it's more than 144, obviously, get to do is come talk to us and we'll make a decision.
Sure.
Not like they can't do it or.
Major work. This is a little bit different than the minor work for windows and doors as it relates to replacement.
Can we just turn that over to you? Make it work with the previous changes? Try again? Do we have to go through all that?
Well, let's, let's approve this language and then you have the flexibility to go and, and wordsmith it.
I think the question, though, is if, if you are replacing a window with something that looks exactly the same, style, size, everything, is the fact that it is on a street facing, a street facing elevation, that means it doesn't matter that it's all the same. It is still coming as major work.
That would be existing structures only, which ought to be added. I guess eliminating or adding would thereby be existing.
Eliminating or adding must be on an existing, right.
Never mind.
But so we're talking about eliminator, eliminating or adding. What was the language for the minor work?
There was none.
Oh, it was just replacement, right?
Yes. It was replacement or new installation.
So what about, I guess, what John's saying, what about other elevations if there's addition or?
So this is solely if you're, if you're introducing a new opening.
No, I'm sorry. I stand corrected. You are right. Yes. Because we're not replacing. We're either taking it out altogether or adding it. We are not replacing.
What if I'm doing it on the sides where I'm not street facing? Where does that fall?
That, since it is not explicitly authorized as a major work, it is, if it's going to be replaced with material, if, say, say you're eliminating one and you're just covering up with the same exterior material.
And I guess I would add the words eliminating or adding up to the minor work. Why not eliminating or adding or replacing, right?
You could just take everything before that red underline and include it under minor somewhere. If, if, if we're in agreeance with this language here.
My recollection of our conversation about that was that was ultimately the deciding factor. Is this a street facing change or is it not? If it is not street facing, then it could be considered for minor work. I don't know that we actually decided that or not.
The only gray is when it comes up on a corner lot.
Yes.
Where it's come up once or twice before.
Well, there are other disadvantages, right?
That's why it comes up before us. And Alex can kick it to us.
There's a unique circumstance that you can argue as part of a factual evidence for you guys to consider. Okay, so.
But, but if it's, now I'm a bit confused, so please straighten me out. Eliminating or adding windows and doors is altogether different than what we talked about above.
Different than replacing, yes.
That's why we're going to add that, eliminating and adding.
Creating new openings or we're closing openings.
Right.
So we're changing the look. We're not replacing with different materials. If you look at the back of this house or you look at the front of this house, a new window's going to change the look, new door's going to change the look. Are we closing that window? It's going to change the look. If we're not going to change the look, it doesn't get addressed here.
But if you are on the not street facing sides, right, elevations, then it falls into minor work. So, right?
Yeah.
So I would just add that language.
Include the same language up above. Yep.
But only, it only becomes.
If it's not major work.
It only becomes.
If I'm eliminating windows or doors on a house, I think that almost, I don't care what side of it is. That probably is a bit much based on the historical view of that house, not just because it's on the front door or on the street facing door. If I'm closing up windows or cutting holes and adding windows where there weren't any, that could be a pretty significant change to that structure.
I guess I would, if you go back to the bullet under minor work, it says replacement and new installation.
Get rid of new installation. Just get rid of it.
And then we don't need it down here under major work at all because if it's not listed under minor, it is major. We don't have to list everything that's major.
Right. You haven't covered elimination, though, right?
Yeah, we would still need to include that.
Well, good point.
So I would just not put the red in there would be my recommendation.
Well, Tom has a substantive disagreement. This is not a language agreement. You substant.
Yeah, I have a substantial, yeah. If we're, if we're going to change, you know, if I'm cut, if I'm taking a window that's, I don't know, four by four, and I'm putting in a 10 by 12, even if it's not on a street facing side, I think that's a pretty substantial change, and I just made that up, pretty substantial change to that house.
Well, that wouldn't be included as minor work because it has to be the same, same size.
Right. That, that would be, that would not be replacing same for same.
It wouldn't meet the minor work criteria, therefore it's a major.
I'm not arguing with minor work. I understand.
I, I think, Tom, if I were, and by the way, I'm not, I'm not saying that I don't agree with you here.
Okay.
Because I might. I'm trying, thinking back to the conversation we had. If you're doing something on the rear of the house, it's not visible from the front of the house. And the backyard is all screened, so even your backyard neighbors don't see it. I think we had some conversation around why do we care? How, in what sense does that change whether it is congruous or not if you cannot see it? Which kind of covers, Richard, the corner lot. One could argue, anything that faces on a street doesn't have to be where the address numbers are.
I guess your point is eliminating or adding windows and/or doors. And what you're saying is the difference is why we're distinguishing street facing elevations, which it could be major on the back.
Right.
Taking it from four to 12 feet, putting in two French doors or putting patio doors from when an old window used to be, irrespective of whether your neighbor can see it or not.
Right. It's changing the, the structure of that house.
Clearly.
It clearly could be a significant change.
Couldn't we just simply strike that bullet altogether?
Altering the size would be, would be authorized as a minor work.
Couldn't we just strike that bullet altogether in major work? I mean, anything you do that doesn't qualify as minor is major.
Right.
Bullet for.
To allow for staff to be able to issue minor works if you are adding.
I'm not saying replace, I'm not saying eliminating the minor work bullet. I'm saying, what do we need a major bullet for?
So, so let's, let's instead take away what has to be a major and just say, what's a minor? What, what, what are you, what are you willing to authorize staff to review and issue a COA for?
And if as you go through it, you say, well, this doesn't conform to minor, it must therefore, if it's not basic and it's not minor, it must therefore be major.
All right, so what?
Whether we specify it or not.
Right. So.
Break the bullet.
So then.
But one of the goals.
Where is it going?
Is to give the most specificity as possible to these poor guys on the front line.
Yeah, so.
So they can point to something and say to the applicant, but look.
All right.
But we don't list all major work.
We can't list all the major work.
No, no, no. But my, but I think, and to Tom's point, someone shows up and says, I want to take a four foot window out, put a 10 foot window in. So Alex says, well, wait a minute. That's not covered under anything in minor because it's not the same size, even if it's the same style and the same material. But it's not the same size. Eh, it's no longer minor.
It's no longer minor. So therefore, by default, everything that's not basic and not minor is automatically.
Soon as you do something that violates any of the things in minor, it has become major.
Is that enough for you guys?
Is that clear enough for you all?
But, but what I'm struggling with is if we don't introduce language about adding a new window or door, then it's basically all going to be major. That's not what the, the objective was here. Was what can be a minor work? Where can you add a window? Where can you eliminate a window or door?
Nowhere under minor.
But what we're trying to say.
David's a no.
That it's major work if you're replacing a window other than in kind. No.
It'll be a different material.
True. But even if it's in kind, if it's on the front of the house, forget what front means, it's major work, right? That's, that's what we're trying to say.
That's, that's not what I have proposed.
Street facing, right. That's what I'd be, my front.
No, because.
No, I don't think that's what this says. There's.
Minor work if you replace in kind, right?
Even street facing.
If it's on.
Even street facing.
Yes.
Wait a minute. Eliminating or adding windows and doors on street facing elevations.
We're talking about striking that.
Yeah. Well, no, that, the intent, what that means, Eric, is if you've got a, you've got a side entry door and you want to just, I don't use it, it's useless, I'm getting rid of it. Or if you have, you know, a transom window because there's a, there's a bathroom on this one side elevation, and now you do want a, an entry door on the side, or a new window because you want more light in the kitchen, then you can, that's what, that's what that standard's for. Not if, not if you have an existing hole and you're replacing something inside.
Then what if you just deleted everything in red and just kept it there?
That takes us back to a couple of months ago when we had a couple of cases where someone was saying, hey, I want to take away the small window and put a transom window.
Yeah, but that's what, that's what everybody's saying they want now.
Well, that's what you and, that's what David, and I'm not picking on you. I really am not picking on anybody.
Sounding like Tom and Eric wanted it.
What we were doing is trying to, someone made the suggestion saying, well, if it's, if it's not minor work, then it's major work. But then it's, if it's not minor work or major work, then it's basic work. Where do you start, right? So I think.
You do. I mean, automatically.
No, but then you've got to extend.
And not in one of the first two, what is it?
But then we've got to go way back to basic work and beef all of that up to get more clarity to everybody.
So here, here's my question to you then, because this is, this is what the, this is the objective.
That's why I asked. I'm confused.
And, and we have, we forked out a few times here. But I think I've at least have some idea.
We'll give it a shot.
All right. So what is this group comfortable with allowing staff to apply the standards for adding a new opening, door or window on a structure, or eliminating a door or window? Getting rid of, blocking it up?
Done.
Right. I would go back to, I would go back to Tom's point. If you are doing that, it is by definition altering the.
How the house looks, which is kind of the gist of what we have to take a look at.
Right? It could. And, and that's a.
Therefore, I think it needs to come back here. That's my, that's my.
Sure. Okay.
Now, and it may be they want to replace a six inch by 10 inch with a 12 inch by 12 inch.
My whole point.
It could be that, or it could be the other option that you can't really define. It could be six feet by, you know, the little bitty one with a, with a sliding glass doors, which.
So this is the beauty part of why you apply standards to each one of these authorized works. So then we go to our windows and door standards under changes to existing structures, right? If you are including a new window.
Right.
Right? On, it depends on what elevation it is, you're, you know, new window, right? Then under those standards, then in order to meet a standard, it's got to, non-street facing elevation, it's got to match an existing window in dimension, style.
Right.
Color as another existing window on the home. So let's say just, there's 2 million examples we can probably come up with today. Because this is how it'd been applied under, under previous standards. Rear elevation, just using rear elevation, for example. Maybe something tangible for the group, if you were there and you can remember, we had a case for property on Village Green, not east or west, across Palmetto on the south side, where it backs up to the course, right, to the, to resort property. There was a, what I think we might all agree, that was a, a door there that was not compatible with anything on that structure. It was probably something that was added 15, 20 years ago. And, and they wanted to change it to either a window or another door that basically matched. It was black, it matched, it was patio doors, I believe, right?
Remember that.
And so it matched the pattern with everything else on that structure. Rear elevation. Help me with some terminology. If you, if you are comfortable with staff making that turn. If that buck stops there, then we strike it, we, we get rid of the red underline and we move to the next item?
My suggestion would be if a homeowner is replacing an existing window or door with what appears to be a matching window or door, that's minor. Everything else is major.
Okay.
If I'm replacing a door.
Placing.
Replacing a door with something that is different than the door that I'm replacing, but is identical or very similar to other doors on the structure.
One it's replacing, not other windows.
And so in thi- in this case.
If I'm replacing window A, it has to look like window A.
But if window A doesn't look like any other window on my house, and I now want to put in window B, which does look like all the other windows in my house, you still want that coming here? Okay?
I, I think that makes sense, because although.
That's fine.
Under the facts that you're hypothesizing, yes, sure, we'd, we'd approve it immediately. But we're trying to draft rules here that are comprehensible and, and, and consistent. So right now, we have something that says that it's major work to eliminate or add windows and doors on str- front-facing elevations, and we got another, and that's major work, then we got a minor work that it would be easy to not understand how those two fit together, which one applies in a given case if it's a, if it's on the front. So we just need to clarify.
Yeah, I don't care if we have things that come before us that are very easy approvals. We look at them, and we consider it major work, but all seven of us say, well, that's a no-brainer, we're done. That, that doesn't bother me at all. I, I think going back trying to, to 20,000 feet, how you design standards, if we can def, if we have comprehensive definition of what we consider to be basic work and minor work, and we, we, I don't think we need a fourth category. If we say that anything that is not clearly basic with standards that staff can apply, they should be pretty non-discretionary. This is what it says, and if it's this, then, you want to install a mailbox in your house, it's basic, you just go do it. And minor. And then everything that doesn't fit into those two by definition is major, even if they produce easy approvals, I don't, I don't have any problem with that. I think that's maybe what our standards ought to be.
And I think that's, because you're never gonna list all the major work.
Right.
I mean, that would be a list.
That's why the terminology is including but not limited to, and some of the other things. And we, that, that, I'm sorry, but that's what we are hired to do on a day-to-day basis, every day.
And I think that's consistent with our not looking at an approval list, but rather looking at a prohibited list.
All right, we're on page one, and it's been an hour.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right, so I'm going to strike this red underline, you guys do not trust us in making that terminology.
Not a trust, no, Alex, it's not a trust issue.
I, I still think you strike the entire bullet.
I'm, I'm full of this language, and even if you, as, as written, I may be the only one, just because I think in the last year, we've had four or five of these, and I've asked myself, why has this poor person come and spent an hour and a half of their time, made an application, paid 500 bucks? It's, and this is, I, I completely trust staff to handle it, and if they don't, they'll kick it to us. And they have that discretion. And I think we can caveat that by saying, if you're on a corner lot, it will be, you know, looked on with.
Brutinized.
Additional scrutiny, and if it's on a corner lot, it'll get kicked to, you know, kicked to HPC.
I take none of this personal.
Okay.
I, I just.
I'm just trying to make it easier, get more of our plate.
I know you're not, I just.
I take none of this personal. But, but it is sort of akin to that last bullet under minor work. If it's a, if it's a no-brainer rubber stamp, that no discretion is really applied, then it doesn't really have to. But it's okay. I can see, though, if you're, if you're taking a rear elevation that has six windows, and you're blocking them all up, you've completely changed that.
Right. And that's beyond, that, then you get into congruity, and that's our business.
But if, if we look at, say, the, the fourth bullet here under major work, almost by definition, if you're replacing something existing with something that is different and is not compatible with the original, I don't know, I'm not against stating it, almost by definition, that would clearly mean that as staff reviewed this, they could, they would find something that said, well, wait a minute, it's not here under basic work, and it's not here under, under minor work, therefore it must be major.
It's not clearly authorized, as we have a minor work bullet that basically speaks right to it. And thank you for moving on to the next bullet.
In advance.
So we can basically get rid of that one, right?
All right.
So now we're going to the next page.
No, we still got one bullet here.
Oh.
Or we go to the next page.
Oh, the bottom one?
That's when John just.
He just eliminated that one.
The resurfacing buildings?
He deleted it.
The entire bullet.
Okay. I don't mind the saying it, but I think it's, I think it's repetitive, because that would mean it would not qualify under basic, and so it must be major.
All right, let's go to roofs.
I'd like to suggest, knowing what's coming, some, coming down the road in the next work session, or maybe the one after that.
Let's do it.
I'd like to just defer these two until then.
Beautiful.
We're gonna make bigger changes, we hope.
Okay.
I hope.
So on to the third page.
But I, I would, I would make one observation whenever we come back to this. I don't know that we want to, to compare material to architecture.
Okay.
David Mailford comfortable doing that.
And that's existing language, but certainly I, I.
I, I think that's a, that's a little bit of a can of worms even beyond congruous. But I'm delighted to defer, David, I agree with.
Okay.
It's deferred. Let's go.
I think we've kind of already taken care of four here, right? With the discussion under minor work bullet?
I have a question about the word composition.
Okay.
Could be read to mean material. It's a little confusing.
And it, and it's, it's been in there, so it, it's been, it's not been a problem. If.
What do we mean by the word composition?
I think, you know, fiber cement's meant to mimic wood, right?
Right.
So like a wood composite.
We have material preceding that, so we've covered material. What's the word composition mean?
Take it out.
You want it out?
I agree.
You don't know what it is, take it out.
Take it out, yeah.
Because I don't know how you hold somebody to a standard you don't know what it means.
Raise your hand if you're a part of that, that, the adoption of this thing back then.
Who put that in there in the first place?
John, Eric, Tom, and Richard. I know you guys came about after a whole nother group, but all right. Trust me, I threw my hands up a long time ago with that one. All right, well, that's it.
So what's the, what's the roof thing, may I ask?
I'm gonna, I'm working on some other stuff.
Special project, special project.
And I think we have a case this afternoon that would impinge on those, both of those two bullets as well, so perhaps best to have the case first, and then.
We've got window cases too, so what's the difference?
Well, these aren't, these don't, these changes don't apply to anything we're doing today.
It's not like this has.
Because they aren't voted on, and Village Council hasn't approved them, so.
We, we, we brought it up.
I missed a meeting somewhere? Did I miss a meeting? Okay.
Eric? Proposed.
What else do we need to talk about, if you're looking, would be my question.
Well, can we, oh, is this the whole, are we, are you saying like, this is it? This is the end of the review, or there's more to go, right? Yeah, yeah.
At least, at least that was set up for today.
I got you.
You know, I mean.
What, I guess my question then is, what else in this project? Because this is a specific project to delineate those three. Are we at the end of talking about that, or are we gonna, is there some more you're gonna present to us after this point in time?
So I think there just needs to be a, a little bit more tinkering, right? And I think we can probably, hopefully at the next meeting, maybe consider.
Okay.
Bringing a comprehensive document based on all the stuff we've discussed over close to a year.
So you're, you've gone through all, all the existing guidelines as far as we're going to for this project, and we now have a, a set of recommendations that we need to finalize language, and then.
Bump up to the Village Council.
Vote on them, and then bump to council.
Okay.
That's the idea.
And if these were adopted by the council, how would it affect the monthly meetings?
Well, before eliminating adding windows and doors on street-facing elevations was struck. I think the caseload could, there could be an inversion in caseload by 20 to 30% maybe. Maybe.
Primarily the result of.
These changes.
Clarifying the division between basic work and minor work.
It's more than clarifying, it's, these have been substantive changes, right?
And much more specific, and, and items that help us as staff complete our job, whether or not it, it's funneling one to you guys, or telling them they don't need anything from us, or vice versa. There were a couple of items we, where we unfortunately did not have as, as good of an attendance, and we have Terry's excused, we just realized he's in Mexico somewhere. I'm totally worried about what we're discussing, but that we might want to revisit as, when we have other folks. And I'll try to go through, I, I've made notes in every one of these meetings. Ann sent me an email as I was hurrying through a, a meal to get prepared for this, so I'm sorry, I'm not.
Only another.
That, that, that ready to discuss that. But just for, because we have some filler time, right? So one of those examples would be, like, for fencing, horizontal-type slats, if you're doing, you know, typically the, the slats on a shadow box fence, or the extra, or vertical. You know, it, it's been kind of popular, trendy, if you will, to do the horizontal, if you go down the.
For example, a split rail, is it horizontal?
Correct. So it was how do we, how do we keep split rail, a post-in rail, if you will, okay, but if you're doing, so if you're doing a solid fence, which aren't permitted anyway, bad example, or a shadow box fence, that the, the exterior members or boards must be vertical. I don't know, just, so that, that's something that I don't think we, we had three or four of us here for that, it had to be at least four. I don't know, but.
I think the fence styles are outdated. I think there's more fence styles, not saying they would fit in, but I think if you did an audit of 500 homes in the village, there's gonna be 25 different fence styles, not just the six that we have approved in the guidelines, or standards. And then the other one we, in the past, we've talked about about a year or two ago, was play, playhouses for kids. And I know the UDO handles it through playground equipment and maybe recreational equipment, but I, I built a big one. Wasn't not allowed.
Was it substantially sized?
But it, it was bigger than I intended, as I said, I just built this, I didn't have to make any cuts on wood, so, you know. This is how big this, the 12-foot board, it's gonna be 12 feet long, so. But it's in the back of the yard, it's hidden, but someone could put something like that up against the property line for the world to see with no landscaping, and it doesn't particularly fit in. I, I'm seeing that happen a lot on the school side of the village. So I, I do think some sort of governance there. There is one or two sort of fitness, CrossFit contraptions that have been built in some backyards, and so I, maybe to put some guidance on that, because we, we regulate accessory structures, whether it's eight by eight, and some of these playhouses and swing sets are a whole lot bigger than that, so.
I, I remember when we first bought our, our first house here in 1993, I built, not a huge one, on the side yard, and it's, ours was a corner lot, and I remember our realtor at the time saying, I don't know if the village is gonna like that. Well, there were no HPC guidelines in 1993, so I don't know what that would have said, but.
Well, they're here today, and they're also, and they still don't address it, so.
What we want to do, when we go next to the Village Council, is we want to say, we have been working on a project in which we are attempting to do a better job of defining what's minor work, what's major work, and what's basic work. And the significance is, we can, if we can protect the historic character of the historic district without requiring people to go to hearings before us, if we can assign responsibility to do more things to the staff, the expert staff that we have, and still get the protection that you, the Village Council, are expecting us to provide, then that's what we're trying to do. That's, that is good government, n- number one, right? The government that governs well, but governs without a heavy hand, that's what we're trying to accomplish. And I think Alex is right, there probably are a few details that we need to revisit before we. One more cycle of this, at least. But I, but I don't think they're, they're not big. They're not big, but they are.
And it's gonna require a vote, right?
Yeah, they do, they require a vote.
And I'm sure council, um, just honestly, because, because we, we do have two new council members, and we, we started this journey before that. So to your point, Eric, the staff memo for that agenda item when it comes time is gonna have to be educational. Here's what we started on, this was the objective, after careful discussion, deliberation with, you know, you know, we're gonna get a new, a new board member, right? Who's gonna have a say-so in this, so there's gonna, likely gonna have to be some education there as well. But if we.
That's gonna be your task to put, get that memo to the council, correct.
Yep, and we're gonna try to do it before the end of the year, before December 31st.
Do what?
Get this to council.
I, well, I hope.
I would hope maybe October 1st, or September.
I hope, or long before.
Trust me.
That's not in Alex's control.
Trust me. Yeah. My, my goal is. But, but also.
I think Eric said it well, we want this to be more efficient for homeowners, we want to protect standards in the district, and we want to take advantage of the fact that staff is very capable to make a lot of these decisions, as long as we're clear on what we permit them to do and don't permit them to do.
Stringline the process without compromise.
So staff can do a better job.
Well, jumping off from the homeowners, are you guys going to be addressing commercial? I see you guys, this is it for me, so I went and lobbed in one last signage. I, I don't think we've ever gone into that to discuss that a lot.
I, I agree, that's one that needs to do it, but I, I want to go back to Eric's, I, so we've got this one project, let's say for the sake of argument, one step from in the can, for which it can then go to, to the top there. I think the next question, and what my original raise was here, was, okay, set that aside, that's taken care of to the extent we can now. What is the next thing we're gonna, what's the next chunk we're gonna, to take on so that Alex and, and we can start thinking and looking of it? David's looking at one for, I know, for, for roofs, right? I think you said?
I'm just starting at the top, working my way through the whole book.
Okay, but what, what's the next one you're working? There, there are several things that Alex and David and I have been talking about to bring to all of you. But in an organized fashion, because it's, it's, it's not gonna do any good. So then my question to you, Alex and David, is, is what's the next chunk?
I, I want to get one victory before I even embark on another one, because it has been one, one hell of a 12-month period, so. And I don't mean this mission, I don't mean this group, I don't mean anything else. We have some folks in the audience that I'm so glad that are here with us now, and are going to be introduced into the system, so my, my energy needs to be elsewhere.
We've got some time on, now, why don't you introduce some of these people for us?
All right, so we do have two new staff members. All right, so we do have two new staff members, this is their second week on the job, so if they stay after today.
They're still here.
Yeah, that's good.
So just closely here, this is Maria Carpenter, she is our planner.
Hello, Maria.
Hello, Maria.
She comes to us from a area you may have heard of, Aberdeen, North Carolina. She lives locally. And this gentleman over here on your right is Alfred Cassidy, he is our senior planner, and he comes from us, from, most recently, with Florence, South Carolina.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Both understand what COAs and dealing with either downtown review commissions, I believe, or committees, and of course, HPCs, and how they operate, so amongst other things. So we've been inundating them with information, and Pinehurst, and we're now.
And they are now sitting here through their first HPC meeting. One of them has run screaming from the room, which is either a sign of great courage or lack of judgment, we'll have to see.
I'm still here too, right? So what does that say?
We've given up on you, we couldn't chase you out, so we had to.
Coming back to Ann's point, as I think back to the presentation that was made to us on the elementary school, I could make the argument that that is completely not Congress with the historic district, and the presentation itself was way above my pay grade. They're talking about the R-value of the windows, and it was a fantastic presentation. I didn't feel myself, hey, we need the elementary school, it was going to get passed, if they'd, well, I think, thinking that commercial standards should be the same as residential standards, we're outgrowing that if we haven't already outgrown it, and that probably does need to be looked at in a more formal way, whether that's next or not, I don't know.
I think you're right, and I think there's, and another that fits right in with that too, is that I don't believe there's any way for us to do a preliminary review of something. I don't think there's anything in the statute that says we can do a preliminary review, and they're going to come back later for a final review. I think that's outside the scope of the statute completely, because there's nothing that talks the word preliminary in there that I was able to find.
Continuing my line of thinking, when the village chapel comes before us, or when the resort comes before us, I know that the presentation is going to have been very well put together. They use professional organizations, they're not doing this off the back of the envelope, and it's going to be good. I don't think our standards probably are at the level of the presentation that they make to us, and whether they need to be changed or not, that's a different question, but when you start building a 36-room hotel or an 800-student elementary school, that's different than figuring out whether the windows should be made of vinyl or not.
Right, but we still should have a say-so.
Absolutely.
We can't arbitrarily say, well, it's too fancy for us, leave it alone.
Could you imagine if we have said, well, the whole exterior of the elementary school is not Congress with the district, and we're not going to approve it?
Why couldn't you have?
Yeah, why couldn't you? We could have.
Certainly could, yeah.
When the changes to the front of the Carolina Hotel came before us a couple of months ago, when I first looked at them, I said, I don't like that. I don't like the fire pit or whatever the heck it was they were putting, and I didn't like what they were doing to the front entrance. Then I looked at our standards. No standard in there that would not permit them to do what they were doing. My own personal aesthetic may have been offended, but my own personal aesthetic is not written into the.
Standards, right.
Now, I wasn't offended by the elementary school, maybe that's because my standards are too lax. I don't know, it looked like a nice elementary school to me.
It's wonderful.
Like one that would have been appropriate in 1901, you know?
And so that's why you put subjective criteria in for items that you know are going to, without a doubt, no matter what, be a major work item, that compatible, the congruity that, consistent with, that type of terminology. That way, you apply that discretion based on what's been given to you.
No, I'm not saying I don't like the look of it. I was hoping it was going to have a little bit of more of a New England-y. Now, I know nothing about what the cost of that would have been, and that's clearly a consideration that has to be taken into account.
Well, yes, it has to be taken into account, but I'm not sure it has to be taken into account by, from us.
I'm saying, from an overall standpoint, there is a consideration there, it is not our consideration, I agree with that. You know, I wish it looked like some of the old buildings at Dartmouth, as an example.
Or even more like the manor of the Holly or something to those.
Yeah, exactly.
And there's a standard that it be basically one of these types of styles, or resemble one of these types of styles, in a typical one- or two-story type colonial, or yada, yada, yada.
That school could be in Austin, Texas, or Atlanta, or someplace that does not have a historic, just beautiful school, and I'm sure it's wonderful on the inside. I don't happen to have any children that go there, but that's neither here nor there either.
For the money they spent, it ought to look beautiful. That's a separate subject.
So one topic, just to kind of, for you guys, if you would like to mark your calendars, you should have received an email from Shannon about some school of government training that's coming up in August and September. So I think it's going to be all virtual, and there's the quasi-judicial board workshop, which is obviously more applicable for your work as a HPC member. August 24th, 1:00 to 3:30, that is a Wednesday, so if you can, if you would like to attend. The other one in September is on the 13th, which is a Tuesday evening from 5:30 to 8:00. So think about it, if you're interested in it, let us know, we can work on hopefully getting you guys signed up. So they typically do this in the summer?
There's no cost for it, so the signup should be almost one-on-one. Unless we get together as a group and come watch it here or something.
Alex, are they the same, just being given twice?
Correct, usually they do an afternoon and an evening session for those who have time.
And although, and I've been to three of these all along, and although it talks about the fact that there's zoning, that's, they usually, and love is still in there, they will bring in some issues from HPC. It really isn't a zoning and planning issue, it's more of a quasi-judicial issue that they're teaching.
I couldn't do the August one.
If people kind of thought, got off-put by the fact that it only talked about zoning, that's not true. It's, the issue is to teach quasi-judicial, at least it has been historically.
So what we'll do is, we'll keep a tab on it, because I don't think registration's open yet. So Shannon, Aaron's the one who's going to be pushing me to get out the door here in about an hour or so. Sorry. Shannon, we'll get a notification when the registration's open for it, and we'll hit you guys again, so this is just a more, you know, mark your calendar, and we'll see what we can do to get everyone registered and signed up for it.
And we can come in here, use one of the.
Yeah, we just got to notice it and do that whole show, and then be at the mercy of our technology, so you're more trustworthy of yours, or more comfortable at home, however.
Do we do this from home via Zoom, or do we come in here?
It's a remote option, so.
We could do either.
Yeah.
Good.
If you're considering coming here and doing it together as a group, I would not recommend the 13th at all, because that's a council meeting, and staff will obviously be busy, and we won't have space.
We could use the other room.
You could.
I mean, it doesn't have to be this one.
Think about it.
Okay. When I did it years ago, it was in place, and it was in place, or like, someplace near Charlotte, and got to. And actually got some ideas from some of the people about, they were there, that's why I was somewhat, this and $5 bill makes any difference. But I thought having them live was much better than doing this.
I think that's always the case, but, and if.
Do it, so.
If anything changes, and how the course is offering, that could be part of the reason maybe why it's not completely registered, they might do a hybrid version, the school of government has done some of that recently. There's also a more robust for administrative staff only, that the certified zoning officer course, which will gear up usually late summer, early fall, there's several sections of those, and they're doing a hybrid option, I believe, for that too. So we'll get notifications, we'll send a blast out to you guys.
I mean, when you're on a Zoom call, it's hard, you've got 500 people on a Zoom call, you're never going to get your, you're lucky if you can get one question answered, let alone anything else, so. And they're doing state, each one of those, in my understanding, statewide, so you'd be, 500 wouldn't be unreasonable.
Could be, yeah. Typically, what they had done when it was all in person, this is their annual summer offerings they do, typically what they would do is they would alternate, one year they would focus on quasi-judicial, and the other year they would focus on legislative, and they would have about four offerings throughout the state. So they have an offering near Asheville, they would have an offering near the Triad, Greensboro, Winston-Salem, High Point area, they do a couple of offerings in the Triangle area, Holly Springs, Cary, Raleigh.
Exactly.
Then they'll have one out in Wilson, you know, for the folks in the eastern part of the state.
But they don't do that, or I've offered it recently.
Unfortunately, this is the last time we'll work with Ann, at least in this period, so formally.
Lives by, doesn't it?
It does.
When you're having fun.
I still remember you and David both coming in for your onboarding at the same time, and.
Look, he's writing all the rules all by himself, so.
What I'll do without you, Ann?
Likewise.
No, it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you all.
Well, you have made, you've made great contributions, I don't want to, you know, get all sappy about it, but you've made great contributions to the HPC in your brief two-year tenure, and maybe someday in the future, we'll see you here again.
Well, you'll see me.
Who knows? May even be an applicant before us.
I sure hope not.
Yeah, well, I want to see what the new guidelines, the standards say.
Maybe you should have gotten them before they were.
Yeah, maybe I should. Like, until December, apparently, so.
You can always come back and sit in the audience, if you're bored one day.
There's no, like.
Pretty bored, I would think.
Legacy program for ex-commissioners where they get free COAs for the rest of their life and don't pay permit fees.
Are you asking for Ann or for someone else?
Yeah. He just wants the precedent to be.
We should implement it for her, and the rest of us get it out of our mouths.
Tom wouldn't mind it either.
See, that's why it works, I know it easily.
It's too late for me. I missed that boat.
Yeah, John, you missed that, yeah.
I wish you all the best. Anything else on this stuff, in this meeting?
I think, I think we're done.
Need a motion to adjourn.
We do.
So moved.
Do you have a half an hour?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Work session is adjourned.